A lot of great iconic images. Some you can see here right behind me. There's Harry Benson's pictures of the Reagans dancing from 1985, which was a seminal picture in the magazine and in the Reagan presidency. A picture of Demi Moore, who was seven months pregnant at the time. In the 90s, of Quentin Tarantino, when he'd just done Reservoir Dogs and was writing pulp fiction, which is very moody and menacing and strange. So that image is by Steven Denalien. So we have a lot of variety in the show. I hope people who come to the show have a sense of the quality that it's important to invest in great photography. And you see this in many of the great images that are here. Vanity Fair, Hollywood Calling, At the Annenberg Space for Photography. Any show at the Annenberg Space is always free. It's in Century City. The parking is easy. And it'll be up through July. And if you come in a tuxedo or a sequin gown, you do also get a film.
We go from the iconic nostalgia to the cutting-edge contemporary. It's prime season for art collectors. And their happy hunting ground is also one of the biggest art events of the year. Of course, we're talking about L.A. Art Show 2020. Get a load of these fabulous pieces.
The L.A. Art Show 25th anniversary. It's at the L.A. Convention Center. 123 galleries from 22 different countries, as well as diverse art, which is bringing museums and nonprofits from all around the world.
We've been coming here for about three years. And over these last three years, we have been collecting art and really enjoying the process.
We've been inspired by the art that we hear. It's such a diversity that I think it's upped our game in art. And we have found whole art changing because of the art that we've been able to see.
I was here last year as well with a different body of work, a precursor to this work. And it's being just loved, really loved. And I've been asked a lot of questions. And I'm noticing that the viewers are relating. But here we have no labels. So it's very much that slow gaze, interpretation, and the chance to just settle off and hear the paintings.
It has a nice vibe and kind of an interesting buzz. It seems like a lot of the attendees are enjoying themselves. And they're excited about what they're looking at.
It's more L.A.-based. These are all galleries that are within Los Angeles themselves. Yeah, sure, the artists are from different parts of the world. But everybody that's showcasing their work here today are individual L.A. galleries. So it's really L.A.-owned.
I think in 20 years from now, L.A. can really be one of, if not the most important, one of the top three in the world for art. We have the artists here. We're building the museums here. The collector base is growing here. So it's an amazing moment for Los Angeles. In 20 years from now, I think it will be an incredible moment.
Check it out. If you're not an art lover already, it'll make you an art lover.
And if you're wondering what type of art is the best seller, it's pop surrealism. Really? I would never have guessed that. The 21st Annual Black College Expo kicked off its yearly event. Students from all over SoCal attended to get a first look at prospective colleges.
Well, for starters, I am a junior in high school. And I just really want to get out there and try and figure out what college is best for me because I already have a goal in my mind. I want to be an athletic trainer, and that's just my number-one goal. And the Black Expo is really amazing in helping with that.
This day is about bringing in the house of all the rich resources, sharing the history and legacy of HBCUs, having other universities share their university and their history, and as well as looking for diversity. And also bringing in resources, our Black history resources. You know, just information to inspire, empower, and motivate students to do their best, to be their best, and providing the access and the pathway really for them to get there. That's what today's all about.
It was important for me to be here today because I'm a senior. I'm looking forward to going to college. So with the colleges here today, it was a great opportunity to get accepted on the spot and to get some scholarship money along with it. So now it's just a matter of deciding where I want to go.
You get multiple perspectives. And you get to talk to people from the school, as well as meeting the people and communicate with different businesses.
We're happy to be here today to bring five busloads of students from Littlewood Middle Schools, as well as our comprehensive high schools and our continuation schools, to gain information, access, college acceptances, and scholarships on the spot.
A new exhibit brings Japanese woodworking traditions to Hollywood. The Hida exhibit at the Japan House recognizes the region in Japan of the same name while celebrating a universal appreciation of fine craftsmanship.
Today, we're at Japan House. Japan House is a cultural initiative from the Ministry of Foreign Affairs in Japan to introduce Japanese culture and develop a greater appreciation of Japanese culture in the North American community. Here at Japan House in Hollywood, at Hollywood and Highland, we get a lot of people from all over the world, as well as very distinct local crowd that come here for Japanese culture, as well as to learn something new about Japan. As part of our current exhibition, Hida: A Woodwork Tradition in the Making, we have a number of different areas that are hands-on. We have a play area here where guests can try their hand at putting together a puzzle developed by Hida craftsmen from natural wood from the Hida forests.
It's a culture that I didn't know about, and it's really interesting. I personally think they've done some creative things with wood that I didn't even know could be done.
In an age of activism, it's easy to forget where the practice first took hold. But no institution in America has been added longer than the NAACP. Its chapter president from the 15th district is Dr. Cheyenne Bryant. L.A. This Week's Umeema Rashid was able to sit down with Dr. Bryant to discuss how the needs of the underrepresented have changed and how the NAACP has evolved to meet these new challenges.
Today, we're here with the lovely Dr. Cheyenne Bryant, psychology expert, community activist, and president of the NAACP chapter out of Council District 15. Welcome, Dr. Bryant.
Thank you for having me.
Of course. Now, most people are familiar with the history of the NAACP as a nation's premier civil rights agency. But can you explain more about the mission and why this organization is still relevant, given the progress that we made in the last century?
We have been around since 1909. We are the oldest and the biggest civil rights organization, not in the nation but in the world. Our mission is to secure, you know, the political, the educational, the social, and the economical spaces in order for us to be able to eliminate the race-based discrimination so that everyone can have eco-health care, so we all can have the right, you know, portion of justice and representation so that our votes can be respected and they can be heard. And, you know, the thing is, I always say you either got to have a seat at the table or a voice at the door. You know, you may not be at the table, but be at the door and have a voice. We had Marlooke King, who was a member and a freedom fighter, a part of our organization. The list goes on and on and on as far as the individuals who are just game changers, who are part of our organization, who were the pioneers to show us a lot of the blueprint that me, myself, and the rest of our members and our presidents in NAACP are adding on top of that foundation.
I know that your passion is around, you know, the work you do in psychology and around mental health. So can you talk about how the mental health work that you do contributes to the work that you do with the NAACP in that heart space?
I've always studied people. And I always had a really deep yearning, seekingness of understanding why people do what they do. And then as I start to understand why they do what they do and where the trauma comes from and the impact that trauma has on people, again, I became more eager. And I said, well, if I can understand the trauma and I can understand the impact, then I can try to figure out a resolution. And if I can't resolve, of course, the impact of the trauma, then maybe I can help individuals learn how to cope. We have to be able to get to a space of really educating our Black community on the importance of mental health.
Thank you for the work that you do in the community. We definitely appreciate you for being here.
Anita, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Absolutely.
The Abilities Expo delivers the latest in independence tech. Celebrate African-American Heritage Month at a cultural festival. Or enjoy a reading of love poems in Espanol. All this and things to do.
Abilities Expo 2020 is taking over West Hall A at the L.A. Convention Center, and you are invited. Abilities Expo is the nation's leading event for people with disabilities, their families, caregivers, and healthcare professionals. Discover the latest life-enhancing products and services and learn from free workshops. You also find the tools you need to increase your independence and fun. Abilities Expo 2020 happens February 21st through 23rd. For details, visit abilities.com. The Pan-African Film and Arts Festival turns 28. Since 1992, this L.A.-based Afrocentric festival has showcased over 150 new films and over 100 fine artists and unique craft persons, all showcasing the diversity and complexity of people of African descent. Don't miss the 28th Annual Pan-African Film and Arts Festival, happening February 11th through the 23rd. For information, visit paff.org. La Palabra invites the community to share its love of poems. Come out to Avenue 50 Studio and enjoy poetry through an open-mic series, followed by a featured poet. La Palabra has been taking place since 2001. On Sunday, February 23rd, the program will present its Valentine edition. Be sure to check it out, beginning at 2:00 P.M. For more information, visit avenue50studio.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Saieda Pagan. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Members, if I can direct your attention to this agenda. Madam Clerk, just run through the agenda.
Madam President, there are requests to continue Items 1A, 2, 3, and 4 for 30 days to March 18th, and Item 12 for one week to February 25th.
Okay, without objection, that would be the order. What's next? Mr. Price?
Madam President, I also ask to hold Item 1C.
Can let's hold Item 1C for Mr. Price?
To continue it. I'm sorry, continue.
Oh, to continue it?
Yes.
Do you have a date?
30 days.
One week? Oh, 30 days?
30 days.
And that would be to March 18th.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's next?
Madam President, Items 1 through 12 are items noticed for public hearing. Please note that for Item 1D, the correct council file is actually Council File Number 17-0160-S693.
Okay, are there any cards on any of these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Members, are there any specials on any of these items? Okay, let's move on.
Items 13 through 29 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Members, are there any specials on any of these items? Mr. Rue?
Number 14, please.
Item 14 for Mr. Rue. Okay, and there's been a request to hold Item 27 for Mr. Kerkorian. Any others, uh, members? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Okay, without objections, those items are now before us. Are there any cards on any of these items?
Yes, there are cards on all these items.
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. Item 28 forthwith, please.
Item 28 forthwith for Mr. O'Farrell. Any specials, members, on any of these items? Very well. What's next?
That then takes council to Items 30 through 50, which are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objections, those items are now before us. Are there any cards on any of these items?
Yes, there are cards on all these items.
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. Item 28 forthwith, please.
Item 28 forthwith for Mr. O'Farrell. Any specials, members, on any of these items? Okay, let's move on.
Items 13 through 29 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Members, are there any specials on any of these items? Mr. Rue?
Number 14, please.
Item 14 for Mr. Rue. Okay, and there's been a request to hold Item 27 for Mr. Kerkorian. Any others, uh, members? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. What's next?
And for the record, Madam President, the ordinance for Item 15 will be held over one week unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Very well. What's next?
That then takes council to Items 30 through 50, which are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objections, those items are now before us. Are there any cards on any of these items?
Yes, there are cards on all these items.
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. Item 28 forthwith, please.
Item 28 forthwith for Mr. O'Farrell. Any specials, members, on any of these items? We're going to go ahead and hold all the items on the desk. What's next?
Madam President, that then takes council back to presentations, Items called special or general public comment.
Okay, Mr. Weston, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
Good morning, Madam President. Good morning, members. It is a pleasure to stand before you today to celebrate the 20th anniversary of an organization that is focused on peace, which is focused on creating opportunities for our youth. An organization that 20 years ago, nobody could have imagined that they would come together to not just make communities throughout this country better, but to help make this entire city better. Could you give a round of applause to Homies Unidos? You know, this country was founded on second chances. This country is supposed to be a country where you come, and if you work hard, you catch a break, you can be successful. But sometimes in life, you don't always use good judgment. Sometimes in life, you make mistakes. And you need people to help put you back on the right path. And that's what this organization does. It works primarily for me in the Pico Union and Koreatown area. They are people, young and old, and I can't begin to tell you how many lives they've turned around. They believe that it's not how many times in life you get knocked down. It's about how many times in life you get back up. And my dear friend, and he's not just my dear friend because we're the same height and we can see eye to eye. But Alex Sanchez is a perfect example of the American dream, where things don't go right in the beginning, but you turn things around and then you devote yourself to just helping other people. And most of us, or all of us in this great chamber, realize that when you're out doing the Lord's work, like they're doing, you don't get paid a lot. It's not financially beneficial. But where it relates to your soul, where it relates to turning the lives of others around, it's probably the most rewarding work that you can do. So I'm going to bring up to say a few words a man who would have never envisioned back in the early '90s that he would be as... in the early 90s that he would be asked to go to the great cities or states of New York, Colorado, Maryland, cities like San Francisco, to give lectures and educate others as to how individuals can change their lives and be a positive part of this great country that we all love. This man is a guy that is always just one phone call away, a very humble man that was given a gift that he didn't know that he had until after in life he zigged when he should've zagged. He is a perfect example of how lives can be changed, and I'm just so honored to have him with me today as we celebrate their 20th anniversary. Please join me in welcoming Alex Sanchez.
First of all, I want to thank City Councilman President Ms. Martinez, as well as the kind words for our council president, Emir Des Herb Wesson. It's been, it's been a journey for Homies Unidos. We have had our ups and downs, but we maintain our vision to continue working in the Pico Union, Koreatown, with our most vulnerable populations. This is the immigrant community, and we continue working around the issue of immigration and criminalized immigrants, not only in the city but in the state. We're also doing work in Long Island, in New York, as well as Maryland, and we've been called now to, including Seattle, where there are populations of immigrant communities that are not being served in a way that addresses the issue, the issues of integration, the issues of persecution, the issue of racism. I think Los Angeles here has given me the opportunity to be that example of an immigrant who had been criminalized, deported, and come back persecuted by death squads in El Salvador, to come back and find a voice and find my healing to be able to do this work for those that are not, do not have the voice. So I want to thank the city of Los Angeles for giving me that opportunity to continue doing this work, but without the support from other partners, Homies Unidos could not be right here today. So I want to thank BTBTS, Breaking Through Barriers, that we do gang intervention with. I want to thank Futuro Now, that we're doing work also with, in the, in the juvenile camps, helping those incarcerated, as well as the National Compadres Network, who have been able to bring us the healing aspect of the indigenous culture to, to help and heal our community, especially our immigrant youth. And also, we want to thank St. John's Well Child and Family Center, who has really been a true believer in our work around healing, around mental health, and they're one of our providers for those that are in need. I wanna, I want all of you to get to know us. I want every one of you in City Council to come to our office, know our work, because we are also planning the next Central America Youth Leadership Conference, which is for over 550 young men and women who are recent arrivals from Central America that are fleeing violence. We need their support. We need the city to be there and tell them, "We welcome you to this city. This is a city of opportunity, and this is a city that will harbor you, protect you, and advocate for you." With that, I want to thank you all for the support and this honor, and we welcome you all to continue learning more about the work that we're doing and become our partners to our work. Thank you.
So on behalf of the entire City Council, we'd like to salute you on your 20th anniversary. And what we're gonna do, we're gonna all come back 20 years from now and celebrate the 40th. One more round of applause for Homies Unidos. Let's go in the back. You got it, Alex?
Madam Clerk, let's reconsider item 15. Let's open the roll for reconsideration. Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, now let's vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. Krikorian, I understand you have some very special guests here this morning?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President. I'm very pleased to welcome, from Glenwood Elementary School, the Glenwood Bears, the second and third graders who are here. Their teacher is Karen Holgren, and they're here to celebrate Engineering Week with us. And as you can see, they've come prepared with their hard hats to get to work and to learn about what engineers do and how important engineering is to every function that city government has, whether it's providing roads that we drive on, safe parks to play in, libraries to learn in, electricity and water that comes to our homes. All of that is done by engineers, and I'm so pleased that you could all be here with us today so you can learn more about that, and hopefully, some of you will be the engineers that this city counts on in the future to build the city of tomorrow. So thank you all very much for being here, Glenwood Elementary. And wave, wave your friends and parents on TV.
Mr. Lee?
Madam President, I'd also like to welcome Jermaine Elementary for joining us today on this same experience. Please, you guys, Jermaine, wave, wave to everybody at home.
Thank you very much and welcome, boys and girls. I hope you enjoy your day here at City Hall. You look young enough, we can all put you to work today. Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Madam Clerk, let's move on to item 14, called special by Mr. Rue. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. And colleagues, before us is an ordinance that I've been working on for many years, and it's common sense legislation that frankly is long overdue. The issue of wild, exotic, and even dangerous animals being used for entertainment purposes came to my doorstep four years ago, when a baby giraffe and elephant were being marched up the Hollywood Hills for a party, so that partygoers could poke and prod at them for a cheap thrill. Time and time again, whether in Council District 4 or across our city, we have heard reports of majestic wild animals being carted around for amusement at a house party. This is not safe, this is not ethical, and perpetuates a barbaric view that wild and exotic animals are toys. It is time that the city of Los Angeles makes absolutely clear that this abuse of wild animals is shameful, and we will not stand for it. The ordinance before us today is one of the strongest in the nation, regulating the exhibition of wild animals, and the result of many meetings with engaged stakeholders. I want to thank the many advocates and community members who have supported our efforts to improve this law and saw it through to its final step today. I also want to thank Councilmember Paul Caretz for his support and continued leadership on animal welfare issues, and everyone who helped advance this legislation. This is an important step forward for Los Angeles, for animal welfare, and it is something that I hope that we will see carried across our nation. I urge an aye vote today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. We've satisfied, satisfied public comment for this item, Madam Clerk, so let's go ahead and vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
That item passes. Thank you, Mr. Rue. Members, let's give another big round of applause to our students that are here this morning. I know they're gonna make their way out of City Council chambers. Thank you for being here, boys and girls. Madam Clerk, let's move on to multiple speaker cards. Our first speaker is Yolanda Flitz. Are you here? Ms. Flitz? Yolanda? Okay, that person's not, doesn't appear to be in the room. Mr. Red Chief, are you here? Do you want to come up and speak? All right, so you're gonna pass on your time? Very well, thank you. Patricia McAllister? Followed by Armando Herman. Ms. McAllister, you're speaking on items 35, general public comment, and items 6, 4th, 3, 6, and 35.
No, no, that's not me. I'm 42, 43, 41.
Hold on for just a second, hold on, I'm having problems with the, with the device.
Forty-one through, forty-one through two, forty-eight.
You're correct. So it's item 1, item 42, 41, 48, and general public comment.
Okay, let's start with item about these liens on the homes. Again, you're putting out thousands, thousands of homeowners out of their properties every year because you're still charging that 250% fee on these liens. Some people, they can't pay $2,000, $3,000 more, plus their mortgage every month. I've been asking you to reduce that significantly or eliminate it. I've been asking you that for three or four years, and you refuse to. That says a lot about who you are. Okay? Now, let's talk about number 48. Here you want to have a bridge, which is a homeless shelter at 1819 Southwestern. Well, that's an illegal alien community. Most of these bridge houses you're putting up, which most of the communities are Hispanic, Latino, Filipino, and Asian. So I don't see you doing these bridges in South Central where Herb Wesson and Price and Harris Dawson, where they are council members. You know why? Because African Americans are there, but Herb Wesson will come here and bring a group of illegal aliens talking about doing for them and their community and their, their organizations. Number 42, here you want a council action for the senior services multipurpose center for the gays and lesbians. Well, I have nothing against gays and lesbians, but I think we should have these senior citizens in all communities, not just for gays and lesbians, okay? Here's the deal, if you call Department of Aging and if they find out that senior citizen is homeless, that senior citizen doesn't get any help from them. Okay? And that's not what we should be doing here. That's why we have all of these 80, 70-year-olds, 60-year-olds seniors on the street, because they're not getting the help that they're supposed to be getting from the Department of Aging and these other city agencies that deal with the homeless. We need to get some lawsuits filed. We need our African-American attorneys, foundational African-Americans, the descendants of slaves. Many of them are attorneys, they finished law school, and they're doing nothing but working for the white man. Also, we need to get in this business of knowing who we are evicting from these housing, these, these houses. A lot of these evictions are, are veterans. We need a certain category for veterans. If they are veterans, that 250% fee should be waived, okay? We must look out for our vets. And veterans, I talk to them all the time on the street. If I walk up on 15 men, 10 of them, and I start talking to them, 10 of them are veterans. And I have veterans in my family, okay? Veterans should be exempt from this 250%, so we can keep them off the street. Something's wrong with your mic, because I keep getting feedback, sir, please fix that, okay? We want, do you hear me, Madam President? I think it's very disrespectful when the president don't listen to the speakers, okay? We're gonna get your reans out of office, including you, Madam. Put your name up there, because sometimes we forget your name. Okay, now...
Let's move on to your general public comment.
Speaking of veterans, the state of California has a tax exempt requirement for veterans. They can sell, they can be vendors on the street if they're disabled. They don't have to pay for a license, okay, and they don't need a service permit, a seller's permit. This is the state of California. Now guess what, guess what Los Angeles did? Starting January 2nd, Los Angeles said, "We're not, we're gonna, we're not gonna abide by this. Our veterans must have a license, okay? They must have a license, they must pay fees." What kind of crap is this? California's doing it, but you decide not to when all these veterans on the street? Let me tell people what's going on. We gotta get these black politicians out of office. Don't vote for Herb Wesson, don't vote for Mark Wrigley-Thomas and Marquise Dawson. Let me tell you what the game is. The reason these people can mistreat black people, put hundreds of thousands on the street is because of these black politicians. These black politicians are buffers. They don't do anything for us, and so when we complain, they say, "What you complaining for? We got, you got black politicians." We gotta get these Negroes out of office and do what we gotta do.
Our next speaker is Armando Herman. He's speaking on items number 1, 5 through 12, and 30 through 50, and a general public comment.
Oh, we're not gonna take it. Thirty days from today till March 18th? We're right. We're free. We'll fight. You'll see, yeah. What am I referring to?
Would you get on the agenda, please?
I'm referring to the liens before I'm interrupted. It's always this manner when you're interrupted. Why such discourse of interruptions when I got the floor?
Mr. Herman, you're off topic. Get back on the items.
I am speaking about the liens. May I continue, Madam Chair, before I was rudely interrupted by the same people who punched me on Friday?
Get back on topic, or I'm gonna have you sit down.
So again, 3143 North Woodcock, you cocksuckers. Shut up and listen. We got a lien for $2,723.43. Unconstitutional to force people to pay when you don't listen. 300% interest on a lien regarding Miss Esperanza Ayala? Well, you get the building and safety assholes standing there, jargon with them, misleading them in their rights to protest here.
Mr. Herman, stop shouting in the mic.
You keep disrupting this meeting, Mr. Herman, slap it on the podium, I'm gonna have you sit down.
So, you see, there's also a lien for $2,110.52. What about item number 42 regarding fucking homosexuals, Rue? God hates homosexuality, and in the mini multipurpose center of Los Angeles, LGBT queers, the center contract will amend the council action November 6th, 2020. the center contract will amend the council action November sixth, twenty-nineteen, to rescind a portion of action which transfers funds for the purpose. Like I said, God hates homosexuality. And for this reason, God condemns you to the hellfire for such an action for council's action. So I'm here to let you know, Rue. I'm here to let you know, Mr. Wesson. God hates homosexuality. God will not vote for you, Mr. Wesson, and your BOS bullshit for the county board of supervisors, because at Saint Banaba Senior Center, God hates fucking liars like I do. United States versus Baghdadi Zarian. Less troubling is the defendant's second statement. Imploing others to shoot the nigger lest his country be fucked for another four or eight years because never in the history has a black person like Obama and Joe done anything right? So if they ever make me carry a rifle, the first man I want in my sights is not Donald Trump in Beverly Hills because Donald Trump is doing a fantastic job with Ben Carson, forcing you to build homeless housing for those veterans, those Americans that you condemn on our sidewalks and streets.
Stop shouting into the mic, Mr. Herman.
Please do not interrupt me. I got the floor. Forty-two USC, nineteen-eighty-three. Like I said, fuck you, forty-two USC, fucking white nigger too.
Members, let's go ahead and vote on items number five through ten. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Let's go ahead and vote on item number twelve. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. I'm sorry about that. You continued item number twelve, so take it off the board. Next speaker, Richard Jimenez. Are you here? Mr. Jimenez? Doesn't appear to be in the room. Eric Previn? Mr. Previn, you're speaking on item number one, eleven, and forty-two through forty-nine. And your general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio C D, and I just want to applaud Council District Ten for having so many well-placed items. For example, the charter bus, which as Fabel will look quickly and check, totally appropriate to speak about. It's an extra seventy-five thousand for the charter bus program in C D ten. Now, this is not to be confused with the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the tree trimming that's going to be sprinkled around for T D ten, C D ten. And certainly, everybody's excited about the Lanny grant of two-hundred thousand dollars for a greening study to decide who's going to get, you know, how we can improve things for the folks who are cooperative with Mr. Wesson's ongoing plans. I personally think it's very, very nice. The other idea that he's got is, in his district, yet another hotel incentive. Here's where we get John Wickham to come down and agree to some T O T relief, which means transit occupancy.
So I think you've moved off the agenda items now, Mr. Previn.
Millions of dollars of benefit. Sorry, sir?
I think you've moved off the agenda items. Please get back on.
No, I don't agree with you, but I would like to get right back on to avoid any further interruptions or violations, so sit still. Guy Lepa is obviously doing a great job, and that's why I think he's been put on yet another commission, because he's an inside civil service commissioner, kind of a guy, and we think that just like the Ethics Commission person who you put in the other day, he will do the right job, which is the job that reflects what the incumbents.
So, Mr. Previn, we already voted on that. It's item thirteen.
Item number one, let's just go to something that you can understand, sir. John Lee and Paul Krikorian, the guys with little kids and the fire hats today, each have it delightfully, and it was very, very close, but in the end, Mr. Lee had the slightly larger and more pernicious of the two. They're both around four thousand, but we're going to give Mr. Lee from C D twelve the credit for going after one of his people for offense or, you know, something, which is mostly metastasized fees. You've been talking about fixing it forever. And for the record, and this is very, very important, that the L.A. Department of Building and Family Services, associated with item number one, are instructed here to go to the North Hollywood, East Valley YMCA and provide whatever permits necessary, because they're blaming the city government for not having permits to fix their swimming pool, which has hundreds of residents. I know you don't care, sir.
Again, that's not item, that's not item one.
It's just an aside to get you paying attention. Now, regarding item number forty-four, oh, I already talked about forty-four. I just want to talk about how, what, these items are fantastic, because what they do is they move the media meter, but they don't actually move the needle. A perfect example is the exotic animal. This is a fake item, sir.
Again, Mr. Previn, you're off topic. That's not the subject of public comment.
Mr. Previn, we've warned you one too many times. Let's just give him his one minute of general public comment.
No, no, you want to truncate me by twenty seconds? Fine, I'll come back to that later. Fair enough. Let's just do the, let's just do the general public. I don't want to upset you, Councilwoman Martinez. You're obviously hanging on. The public comment today has to do with a tweet storm by John Myers. He's a guy who writes about politics for the L.A. Times. He made the case, and I thought he made a good case, that provisional voting gets an extremely high percentage of valid acceptances. In other words, people who vote provisionally because they were, yet he has taken no interest, and I'm asking him to focus on why thirty-five percent of the voting public are not registered, according to the City Clerk of L.A., when they sign nominating petitions. Now, it's true that Krikorian submitted just under six hundred, and all of them were practically valid, except for fifty. And yet, of mine, as an example, over two hundred were invalidated. So there's a, there is a stinky piece of cheese in Denmark, Mr. Fabel, to put it in terms you'll understand. And we need to get to the bottom of it, and I enjoin you to step forward, and let's change election code one oh five. This is the general, general public comment, Krikorian. Now, if Mr. Krikorian would like to join us, February twenty-one, in Studio C D, we'd love to have him.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Members, let's go ahead and vote on item number twenty-seven. As amended.
And, Madam President, amending motion twenty-seven A has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Let's move on and vote on items thirty, thirty through thirty-nine. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, let's vote on item number forty and forty-one. Hold on for just a second. Let's move on to Mr. Sacks. Want to come on up, Arnold Sacks? Mr. Sacks, you're speaking on item number one, forty through forty-two. I'm sorry, number one, forty through forty-four, and forty-six through forty-nine, and your general public comment.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. And so, some of the items I held, like forty-four, forty-six, and forty-eight, come from Council District Ten, which is Herb's district. It's six-hundred thousand dollars in AB twelve ninety funds. Item forty-nine refers to street furniture funds, which is bus bench revenue. Item forty-six refers to AB twelve ninety revenue, which is revenue that came from the redevelopment agencies. So there's a lot of questions here. Are these funds replenished every year? Except they replenished every year in Council District Ten, for instance, that would be, in eight years, four-point-eight million dollars to spend by the councilman. And that's just on the AB twelve ninety funds. So if everybody has that kind of money in their council district, why doesn't it filter down to the neighborhood councils? Item forty refers to the liens. People who have liens posted against them refer to the Rent Authorization Council through the H I C L A, D L A, the council that oversees the lien proposals. And again, why isn't some of this money that's in each council district filtered down to the homes so that the homes can be rehabilitated, and it puts people to work rehabilitating the homes? Why isn't that happened? I don't know. So you have multiple sources of income that go to the council districts. Yet none of it ever seems to get into the general council, general fund, and none of it seems to find its way to the public. It's like the public just is a open pocketbook. Just take the money. "Oh, we're short money. We need money." But you have all these different accounts that nobody seems to want to look into. That's your responsibility as a voter. Check it out. It's really important, because this wash, rinse, repeat cycle can't continue. It just can't. There's less and less jobs, yet there's more and more expenses. So you need to find some people to put into office who are willing to pry out some of that public fund, because essentially, the public is the government. And I heard the government pays for a lot of services. Well, if the government pays for services, and you are the voting public that pays for services, like the AB twelve ninety funds, and that come from the state, and the bus bench revenue that comes from renting, if you pay for those services, you should get services back as a public participant. That's why you read these agendas. Check them out sometime. Public comment?
Yeah, your general public comment, sir.
Oh, good. I like this part. So Friday's meeting posed an interesting question of ethics. There's public ethics, and then there's elected officials' ethics. You know, elected officials are actually sworn to uphold some laws and constitution. The only time the public really has ethics is, you know, generally when you're walking around, whatever your ethics are, or when you go to court. So in your ethical day, would you report a crime if you saw it happen? If you're an elected official and you see somebody committing a crime, would you actually report it? Or would you take money to keep quiet? You know, item thirty-one tomorrow refers to Senate action on the franchise tax board. Yet this franchise tax board was discontinued by Mark Wrigley-Thomas's son three years ago, so that you could have franchises with marijuana dispensaries.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sacks. Members, let's go ahead and vote on items number forty, forty and forty-one together. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Let's vote on items forty-three through forty-seven. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Let's vote on item number fifty. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, Speaker Ivan Michelle Autry, are you here? Mr. Previn, I don't need you to interrupt this meeting. Thank you. Ms. Autry, you're speaking on items number eleven, forty-two, forty-eight, and forty-nine, and your general public comment.
Okay, yes, first, for the record, I'd like to speak against the cover-up of the police brutality, the experimentation that the paramilitary.
Do you want to move on to your general public comment then, and not speak on these items?
No, this is relative to item number eleven, the police services. Right, so that that money will not be used to further experiment on unwitting civilians by the paramilitary, as this is now the funding of the police state martial law, especially with poor women like myself, or women that are single like myself, homeless women. There needs to be more protection from the, for the women against those that are exploiting, experimenting on, torturing, stalking, targeting as a targeted individual. And much of the targeting is perpetrated by FBI, counterintelligence, and police officers experimenting on those who they have put in the trash or labeled as terrorists, undesirables, or whatever that false stigma is to justify their abuse and exploitation, much like the Tuskegee experiments, perpetrated on the best of the airmen, who happened to be African-American. And these government cover-ups will not persist because I'm still alive to expose them. Relative to the Gay and Lesbian Center, again, I believe that more of the funding should be diverted into the black community. As a black woman, I'm not a transsexual, right, despite the government cover-ups and the character assassinations. I think that in honor of Black History Month, why don't you really practically, practically provide more jobs and housing for black people?
I think we veered off the topic on the agenda.
Well, no, okay, I was speaking on the police services, so relative to, I spoke on the Gay and Lesbian Center because I'm encouraging the council to allocate more money in black areas, in areas where people are indigent, people of color. So with the remaining time, I'd like to speak on encouraging you to create more jobs for black people, people of color. We built this country after slavery. We were never given forty acres and a mule or reparations.
Again, I think we're off the agenda. Should we disco the general public comment?
No, this is public comment. Isn't this included in this, in this?
No, no.
On these items, do you want your one minute of general public comment?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I thought that that was included. I thought that that was.
No, we'll restart the clock for that.
Okay, thank, thank you.
So should we go to the general at this point?
Yeah, let's give her her one minute.
No, no, let me just, I'm sorry, my misunderstanding. I thought that the general public comment one minute was also included in that. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So in making the commentary about how the money should be allocated, again, senior citizens, I'm in agreement with my colleagues, the veterans, and there has to be more safe refuge for women, women fleeing misogynistic domestic violence. I was a victim of assault, and I was incarcerated because I defended myself with pepper spray by someone who was hired either by Isaac Shomoff, the Mexican mafia, Malasabatrucha, or other gang stalkers, targeting single women for kidnapping, gang raping, and murder. Latinas usually don't speak up. I'm speaking up. Femicide is at an all-time high, especially petite, single women, Latinas, Asian, and black women. So we need to use that money to protect women, veterans, especially those that are indigent in the street or suffering some type of vulnerability economically. Now, for the public comment, again, you know, Black History Month is every, I celebrate every day. I'm alive every day, despite, you know, government-funded character assassinations. I've been labeled a terrorist for over twenty-five years. I don't even own an arm, or I don't even own a firearm. For those that speak truth to white supremacy, white Zionist male supremacy, or those that threaten the status quo of the most evil exploitation of people in this country, which is not the land of the free, okay? After slavery, this country went directly to Jim Crow and the prison industry for black people, or anyone that would not bow down to these powers that be. In honor of this month, again, every day, I celebrate my survival, my existence, in a system which is not color-blind. This is the worst, worst, one of the most exploitative, one of the most abusive systems in the world. And what is most evil is that the hegemony and the imperialism is hidden, the maintenance of the status quo. I'm tired of seeing people that don't speak English having jobs and not even being citizens. It's ridiculous.
Thank you, Ms. Autry. Your time is up. Members, let's go ahead and vote on item number eleven. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Item forty-two. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Items forty-eight through forty-nine. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, let's move on to item one D, Esperanza Ayala. Are you here? Ms. Ayala, there's also Ayala E. Are you the same person?
Yes.
Okay. You're speaking on items one D.
Excuse me?
You're speaking on item one D?
Yes. I'm speaking for myself, for my house. Okay, when this happened, I, they said you're going to put a lien in my house. When this happened, when the inspector went to my house, we were on Mexican vacation, and that day, my husband passed away. We have a travel accident, and I've been talking to, to speak to Ms. Rodriguez, and they've been ignoring me, and the inspector has been coming to my house a lot of times. I'm not saying that I'm not going to pay it. I don't have the money right now to pay it. I'm into multiple surgeries. I guess if you can lock the interest or that bill be less.
I'm going to get someone to speak to you in just a second. Do you want to go ahead and, take a seat?
Okay, thank you.
And I'm going to get someone. And I'm gonna get someone to go speak to you in just a second. This young woman that's walking over to you, ma'am, ma'am? She'll speak to you. Thank you. There's been a request to continue this item for thirty days, Madam Clerk.
And that would be to March eighteenth.
Okay, without objection, that would be the order.
And Madam President, then, on item one, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that one B be received and filed inasmuch as the fees have been paid, and that the lien be confirmed on one E.
Without objection, that would be the order. Is there a Juan Johnson here for item one A? Your item's been continued. Do you still want, would you like to speak, sir? Why don't you come on up?
Jiwan Johnson, Council District Ten.
Yeah, you can speak on your item, and just so that you know, your item's been continued for thirty days.
Yes, do you have any other items here, or just that one?
Just that one, you can speak on that one now.
Okay, I just wanted to say I'm in support of that item, that motion.
To continue it for thirty days?
Yes, and I wanted to, could I have one minute to speak on something that's not on the agenda, just a general comment?
Do you want to speak under general public comment?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jiwan...
Hold on for just a second, start his time all over again.
Say it again.
I'm gonna start your clock again so you can speak on general public comment.
Okay, thank you.
You can start.
My name is Jiwan Johnson, Council District Ten. I want to encourage everyone here to vote. In the two thousand twenty election, early voting has started. I have seen the LA City View, that's the LA, City LA cable station. I have seen the interviews of Holly Walcott, Raquel Beltran, and Dean Logan, who is the county registrar. Dean Logan, on the sample ballots and the vote-by-mail ballots, has incorrectly told over five million registered voters that there's no list of qualified write-in candidates on the county website. That is actually an untrue statement because as of February third, excuse me, as of January third, there was on the LA County Registrar website a list of over two hundred and fifty write-in candidates. Also, under Raquel Beltran...
Hi, my sub, sir. Thank you.
Could I have a little more time?
No, I'm sorry, everyone gets the same amount of time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Maria Hernandez. Are you here? Maria Hernandez, you're speaking on one C. She's not in the room, and that item's been continued for thirty days, is that correct, Madam Clerk, until March eighteenth?
Correct.
Okay, let's vote on the remaining balance of item number one. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, let's move on to general public comment. If I call your name, please come up to the podium. Noel Gold, are you here?
Yes.
Scott Crawford? Good morning, you have one minute of general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hey, Joe, how's it going? Good morning, Council members and Madam President, thank you so much. I'm here representing Hala, we're seven thousand hosts, actually seven thousand plus hosts regarding the rent stabilization ordinance, owner-occupied motion that you passed in November, instructing the city attorney to work with the Department of Planning to come up with an amendment to the home-sharing ordinance to allow owner-occupied RSOs to host short-term rentals. The problem is not you guys. You guys were awesome in passing that motion. The problem is that city planning seems to have ignored it, and they're slow-walking it, and meanwhile, hosts are losing thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars of income. And the point of the RSO was to take out the bad actors who were taking away affordable housing, but this was something that is allowing people who are not in that category throwing the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Crawford?
Good morning, I'm Scott Crawford. Many of you know me, some of you don't. For the last twenty years, I've been volunteering for the city of Los Angeles. I'm a former commissioner. I was appointed by President Obama to serve on the Selective Service Board, which I still do. However, the city has stopped letting RSO owner-occupied people do Airbnb. It's not gonna hurt me, except I have to find a job to get that income coming in. It's gonna hurt the citizens of the city, and I wish you would talk to planning and get them on board with doing the amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Horwath, can you give me just a second, let me call a couple more speakers. Robin Rudzili, are you here? Carolyn Zanelli?
Yes.
Do you want to come on up? Go ahead, sir.
Madam President, Council members, I want to reiterate what the previous two speakers said, and ask you to pressure city planning to get the RSO owner-occupied amendment back to you so they can get passed. I took the day off this morning, canceled all my appointments so that I could be here with you and ask for that. Every week, we have developers that come and would like to buy our property. We would like to hold on to our property, we'd like to keep it, and we need that income so that we can continue to pay our mortgage. Thank you.
You, Robin Rudzil? Good morning.
Good morning, I'm Robin Rudzil from Venice and San Pedro. It makes no sense at all to restrict owner occupants from doing home-sharing in RSO buildings. It benefits no one and only hurts us homeowners. On November fifth, you made it clear that you agreed with that unanimously. But your staff is not working expeditiously on getting this amendment to the HSO done. Meanwhile, we're all dead in the water, as city planning does not allow us to get a registration number, and the marketing platforms don't allow us to advertise for rentals less than thirty days without a registration number. Our only alternative is to rent our units for over thirty days, but that requires us to have to move out of our homes, and for us to do nothing while we're waiting for this amendment is causing a huge financial loss. This long wait is an extreme and undue hardship. Also, many of us have vested rights, and so this is doubly wrong. It's outrageous to hear the amendment is not moving as fast as it could. Please get this amendment moving with the utmost urgency. Thanks.
Thank you. Can you give me just a second, let me call a couple of more speakers?
Sure.
Sam Chung, are you here? Sam?
I'm just got here.
Chung, okay, are you Sam Chung?
Yes, hi.
Okay, you're gonna speak next, sir, right after the speaker. What about Christina Wong?
Christina's here, she just ran to the restroom for a moment.
Okay, what about John Scooter?
Scudder.
Scudder, you want to come on up after our speaker? You can speak after Mr. Chung. Go ahead.
Okay, good morning, honorable city council members. I am here to represent District Ten. I see that Councilman Herb Wesson is not here, or any of his staff here, that I could maybe direct their attention? Okay, well, then I'm just gonna go ahead and, I'm here today to support the appeal filed against the seven-three-eight South Normandy Avenue project development, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, and particularly on behalf of the residents of my neighborhood in the Normandy-Mariposa Historic Apartment District. We go before plum today at two-thirty with our SEQA appeal, case file twenty-dash-twenty-eight-seven. It is an appeal of the new development on our historic street. We are asking that Councilman Wesson, who is not here, and his staff, to take this into consideration, and we have another opportunity is provided to speak with his office and the developer, and come up with a better facade and design that isn't so at odds with our nationally recognized street.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Chung. Is Christina Wong back in the room? You're speaking right after Mr. Chung.
Hi, my name is Sam Chung. I'm one of the environmental commissioners for the city of Monterey Park, and I'm interested in this issue because I understand that this development, it might be affecting the environmental issues of that area. However, at this time, I would like to waive my time and give it to Mr. John Stoddard my minute.
No, you can't do that. He has his own minute, he's gonna speak right after Ms. Wong.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Wong, you want to come on up? John, you're right after Ms. Wong.
Hi, I was specifically here to address Herb Wesson and the rest of the council, and I don't know where he's, does he have staff members who are here?
Do you want to, time's running out, ma'am.
Well, all right, so I'm here to address the building at seven, the development at seven-thirty-eight South Normandy. I'm on the Wilshire Center-Curia Town Neighborhood Council, I'm elected to that board, and I am on the Housing Committee. We saw an earlier rendering of that building, which didn't match the historical nature of that block. The new rendering, I don't think, looks much better. I wanted Herb Wesson to know that forty to fifty permits a year by film-alay, that's how much that block gets shot as a historical block, and this new building doesn't match the historical aesthetic of that block. So I think if this building goes up the way it's designed, we're gonna lose a lot of union film jobs and a lot of business to Curia Town.
Kima?
And we just need to respect the, all right.
Mr. Scooter?
Scudder.
Scudder. Is there Coffee X Press here? Coffee Express?
Yep.
Oh, is that you? Okay. What about Detail Express Construction, is that you as well?
Yep, I own that company too.
Okay, Express Corporation?
I own that company as well.
Okay, thank you, sir. You've got one minute, go ahead.
John Scudder, I'm a business owner, obviously, here in Los Angeles. I'm here on behalf of Coffee Express. This is my third week. It's actually appalling that it's Black History Month, and I'm here fighting for my company because the vending law got passed out of the ninth district from Mr. Price's office that discriminates against veterans. The city of Los Angeles offers veterans an exemption for their business license. The state of California also offers veterans an exemption for their sales license. The new vending law requires that we have to have both, even though we're exempt, therefore you're discriminating against our disabilities, which to bring to the table is an ADA violation, actually three of them. Fifty thousand, hundred thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar fine the city's liable for. I am out of business. I can't state this anymore until you change the law. I've been to your chief of Public Works, I've been to your chief with the county of the Health Department. The problem is, the city passed the law, and the county Health Department does not communicate, and you didn't coordinate.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Shawnee Kirch, are you here?
You called the other two.
No, you only get one minute for general public comment.
Ma'am, you addressed, who was here? I get a minute for each one of those.
No, you do not. General public comment is only one minute, sir.
But I registered.
You did, and you sat down for general public comment, it's only one minute.
I registered under Detail Express on a different topic. I registered on Express Corporation on a different topic.
You're the same speaker, you only get one, you only get one minute, sir. I've gotta let the next woman speak, thank you. Ms. Kirch, are you here? Danny Farrell? Good morning.
Good morning.
You have one minute.
Thank you so much. Honorable council members and Madam President, my name is Hani Kirch, I'm one of the founders of Hala, Home Share Alliance Los Angeles. I'm here today, the group that's come today is, each district is represented, so we are of seven thousand mom-and-pop short-term renting hosts. So we came here to say, first of all, thank you so much for November fifth's unanimous vote to change and amend the HSO, the home-sharing ordinance. We need your help now desperately. On behalf of all these hosts, this is critical. Planning has told us that it is not critical to them. We need you to do that. Imagine that thirty-five percent of your salary was cut off overnight, so that would be about sixty thousand dollars taken away overnight. Imagine the chaos and catastrophe that you'd find your family and households in. We ask you to please call city planning, get your staff, work with the city attorney, please, honorable city attorney, please help get this draft presented immediately for us. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Danny Farrell, I'm also a member of Hala, and I also just would like to ask you to please expedite the home-sharing owner-occupancy ordinance. My situation, I have to house my mom, who's battling with breast cancer half the year in my second bedroom, and I need the other half of the year to try and make some income so that I can keep my house and not lose it and add to the homelessness. So I thank you guys for...
Can you hold this time for, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Previn continues to disrupt this meeting. If I can hear you, sir, you're disrupting this meeting on the side. So I'm asking you to please sit down and stop disrupting the meeting, or I'm gonna have you removed. Thank you. Mr. Previn, I'm not arguing with you. Sit down, or you're gonna be escorted out. Go ahead, sir, I'm sorry about that.
No, thank you. So that's all, I just wanted to let you know my situation, and thank you all for voting unanimously on November fifth, and I just also ask that you expedite the process with city planning to please help this ordinance happen. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. Can you just give me just a second, let me call a couple of more speakers. Jaime? Giaga, are you here? John Ennis?
John Ennis, can I speak?
I'm sorry, ma'am, just, we have a speaker, I need you to sit down. Thank you. Ma'am, go ahead, you have one minute.
Hi, my name's Rhonda Hayder, I'm a Hala member as well. I own a duplex mid-city, and I've always rented out my upper unit long-term, and I was short-term renting a bedroom in my own home to make ends meet. Since November first, I've seen my personal income cut in half, and for the first time in three years, I'm gonna have to raise the rent on my long-term unit, on my long-term tenants who I love, and because I've been trying to keep the apartment affordable for them, but I can't do that anymore. The city council voted unanimously to direct city planning to do what was necessary to get RSO owner-occupied hosts back into the short-term rental ordinance, but we're seeing absolutely no movement, and meanwhile, a lot of people who we're getting by are now going underwater. So please, don't consider the job done here, because it isn't, and get city planning to do what you directed them to do on November fifth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Madam President and members of the city council, my name is Jaime Giaga, I am an RSO owner-occupied host. I ditto everybody that's said, come before me. We are small business, and we should be a vital part of the city economic activity. And so for us to not be able to do this because of a slowness of the implementation of the amendment really affects our ability to do that. We contribute widely to the economic life of the city, and hopefully this amendment be implemented soon. Thank you.
Dawn? Give me just a second, let me call a couple of more speakers. Is John Ennis in the room? He's not here. Judith McCurdy? Judith McCurdy? Not here. Benjamin Speed? Benjamin? Pasco Abulet? Dawn, go ahead.
Okay, hello. I'm speaking about the RSO owner-occupied as well. You all voted on it November fifth, and we were told that this would be expedited because it was kind of an oversight in the overall amendment. To this day, nothing has happened. I own my home, which happens to be RSO, a short-term rent in the home that I own and I live in. Because of the STR ordinance, on December fifteenth, every future booking I had was canceled. Four days later, I had emergency knee surgery. Now more than ever, I am suffering financially because of this delay and my inability to work until May. At this point, a hundred percent of my disability is going towards my mortgage, a hundred percent. The next three months is just going to put me further into debt. We have been patient, knowing it might take a little time for this, but no movement is not acceptable. Please, this must be a priority. Owner-occupied hosts are suffering. Thank you.
Next speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. I also want to thank the city council for voting unanimously in November two...
Good morning. I also want to thank the city council for voting unanimously in November to allow the owner-occupied RSOs to do short-term rental. I live with my family in a 1,300-square-foot owner-occupied RSO duplex that we use as a single-family home. Our extended family live with us between six to nine months of the year, and we are still unable to short-term rent while they're away. Since the ordinance came into effect, we are now losing 35% of our income. This income is literally helping us keep our mortgage. Our son also starts school this year, and our zone school is extremely poor, unfortunately. So now we are unable to make better educational choices for our son. Without short-term rental income, our choices have become severely limited. We're a hard-working, responsible, and community-oriented family. The RSO limitation is unduly affecting thousands of mom-and-pop hosters compared to single-family homeowners. I emphatically urge the council and planning to move immediately in enacting this unanimous, fair, and just amendment. Thank you so much.
Are you Mr. Boulet?
Yes.
Hold on for just a second. Let me call a couple more speakers. Robert Gangster? Esperanza Ayala? Heather Carson? Ms. Carson, are you here? Daniel Jones? Isaac Medina? And Doug Hanson? Go ahead, sir.
I'm just here to voice my support to the residents who wanted to address Herb Wesson about the development at 738 South Normandy. You've heard the argument, so I won't take too much of your time. To put it shortly, to allow a new ISO to develop in the middle of one of the rare few historic neighborhoods that we have left in Los Angeles would be pretty tragic in terms of cultural and historical value. And as has been showed to you, it would be a loss in terms of financial income because of all the permits and shooting that happens in that area. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, sir? Are you Mr. Gangster?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Before I begin, I just wanted to really show my appreciation for Mr. Harris Dawson and Mr. Sadio and Mr. O'Farrell for listening to our concerns about the issue. I'm a member of the Home Sharing Alliance of Los Angeles. I'm not an RSO host. I rent out the extra bedrooms in my home to travelers. It's been my only source of income for the past eight years, during which time I've been able to stay current on my mortgage, property taxes, as well as make much-needed repairs on my house. But now I'm being brutally affected by the home-sharing ordinance, which was rammed through by Matthew Glezny in the Planning Department. The limits on the number of guests that I'm allowed to host at once is causing extreme financial hardship that's pushing me back towards financial ruin. I emailed Matthew Glezny about these limits. His response to me was, quote, "Some cities have not had restrictions like Santa Monica, and there have been some bad situations," unquote. Really? So because some property owner in another city was acting irresponsibly, Angelinos like me are being punished? I've been doing businesses with the city for eight years, always paying my taxes and fees to the Office of Finance, but now because of some very bad actors, I'm being thrown under the bus and was making my living illegal. Please, please, remove the limits on the number of simultaneous bookings I can have in my home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Hi, good morning, Madam President and council members. Heather Carson, one of the founders of the Home Share Alliance Los Angeles. When we asked planning about the delay on the amendment to the RSO owner-occupied that we thank O'Farrell for making the motion and for council for passing unanimously, Matt Glezny said they were swamped and working on other critical matters. It's been three and a half months. Is it not critical to keep over 7,000 mom-and-pop RSO hosts in their homes during a housing crisis? Glezny has been publicly vocal in his stance against short-term renting, has told hosts that if they cannot pay their mortgage without renting out a room, they should sell their property. Why is someone so openly hostile tasked with writing this amendment? We ask you to insist that planning come back to you with this ordinance. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Jones. It's nice to see the city council. I have a page from the United States Constitution. My mother said, "Don't worry about it if anybody calls me a racist," and I said, "Why?" Because it's their first thought, not yours, Daniel. Here we go. Sanctuary State Bill, Senate Bill 54, is illegal or should have never happened. According to Article 14, Section 1, "All persons born and naturalized in the United States and are subject to the United States and the state for which they reside, no state shall make or enforce any law that abridges my privileges or immunities," semicolon.
Next speaker.
Hello, my name's Isaac Medina. I'm a CSUN student. This is my first city council meeting, and it was very quite interesting. I'm not too sure what we could talk about in public comments. I was going to just wrote a couple of notes down. Just like discussing, yelling, and just interrupting during the meeting, is it going to solve individual people's issues? And trying to work with city council members who do have issues should do that sanely, I would say. And there's just... It was just, I would just say, chaos from the people speaking. I'd also like to say that I'm proud to be Mexican. I don't really say that a lot. My grandparents were immigrants here. I didn't really know that growing up. Always play devil's advocate for stuff, but just calling undocumented immigrants illegal, I just find that just bothers me. And yeah, thank you for your time, city council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Medina, for being here. Next speaker. Are you Mr. Hanson?
I am.
Good morning. Go ahead.
So I'd just like to echo a lot of what's been said by the other people here. You know, I've also had my income impacted significantly over the last three, four months when this has been up to what we needed. So I'd like very much that we could get ahead of all of this and that you would allow us to have our RSO rights. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, that concludes our general public comment. Mr. Kukorian? Want to clarify, item 27?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask that we reconsider item 27 for purposes of continuing it until tomorrow's meeting, if that...
Very well. Let's go ahead and vote on reconsideration, item 27. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
This item will be continued to tomorrow's meeting.
Yeah, and it'll be...
Mr. Previn?
This is... How many warnings is he going to get before he's removed from this meeting?
I'm going to ask the sergeants to please ask Mr. Previn to be removed from this council chambers now.
Now, I really...
Sergeants?
I hate to do this, but as he's being escorted out, I was about to say that item 27 will have further amendments tomorrow that I will be submitting, and I will ask at that time that public comment be taken on the complete matter. But, you know, Mr. Previn just has to learn that he's not a full participant in this city council. He doesn't get to speak to the council president. He gets to speak at the time that it's his time to speak at the mic, and this is just getting absurd. So as the young student from CSUN said, it's very disruptive to our ability to do our business. It's very disruptive for people who have real issues to talk about when people are shouting out from the audience. So we will be taking up item 27 tomorrow, and at that time, Mr. Previn, I will request that public comment be taken on the matter. Now, would you please be quiet for the rest of the meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. Mr. Previn, please make your way out. You've been removed from this council meeting for disrupting our meeting pretty much all morning.
So, Mr. Previn, you've been ordered removed, and you're not doing it? Please leave quietly.
What else is before us, Madam Clerk?
Counsel has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred? I have a quick announcement. Members, are there any announcements? By the way, I have one quick announcement. I just wanted to remind everyone that today, February 18th, is the last day to register to vote. You can register to vote on registeredtovote.ca.gov. I cannot reiterate how important it is to vote in this upcoming election. Today is the very last day you can register to do so in the primaries. So are there any other announcements from our city members? Seeing none, if we can all rise for adjourned motions, including members of the public? Are there any adjourned motions to my right? Any adjourned motions? Mr. Bonin to my left. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I'd like to ask us to adjourn today in memory of a longtime and much-beloved member of the city family, George Wolfberg, who worked for the city and the CAO's office for decades, retiring in 1996 as the Chief Administrative Analyst. George was also served several terms as a member of and as president of the Pacific Palisades Community Council, as chair of and as an active member of the Santa Monica Canyon Civic Association, as a core member and a leader of the Potrero Canyon Park Advisory Committee. He served on the city and the county bicycle advisory committees. And after he retired, Rafe Sunshine brought him back to be the staff member for the Charter Reform Commission in the late '90s. George was famous around the council and around City Hall for being a sharp guy, a straight talker with a lot of integrity. The thing he was probably most known for, two things he was most known for when he worked for the city. One is that he helped write the city's anti-apartheid policy and got the cities to stop dealing with the apartheid government of South Africa, for which he got a phone call here at City Hall that I believe Zev Yaroslavsky put through to him from Archbishop Tutu, thanking him in LA for its leadership. He also was very key in the 1984 Olympics bid, the City of Los Angeles did. He actually wrote the bid, and he actually snuck into the bid unbeknownst to anybody, a mandate that women cycling be part of the competition in 1984. George was a huge advocate for public access. We're building this big park in Pacific Palisades that has been on the books, literally, since Marvin Browdy was in council. And George has been insistent from the very start that it not be something that was designed in a way that would make it easy for Palisadians to get in, but nobody else. He was very insistent that this be open to all. He was a chef, a surfer, a cyclist, and a great-nature lover. One of my favorite moments that I think says a lot about George is, after he retired and he was active with the Santa Monica Canyon Civic Association and Rusta Canyon Park, he was helpful in getting restoration of a eucalyptus grove there. And not only was he instrumental in getting it done, but George was known to go out in the morning and hand-water himself. He had that level of engagement. When Zev and I both provided eulogies a couple weeks ago at George's service, Zev talked about how annoying George was because he would call either of us every single day with some issue in the neighborhood, and he was persistent, but he always had a tremendous smile. And he was known as a mentor, really, to generations of people in the city and around the community. He passed away on February 5th at age 81 from cancer, leaving his 36-year-wife, Diane, his daughter, Anya McCann, his sons, David and Michael, and lots of siblings and grandkids, nieces and nephews, and many, many admirers in Pacific Palisades in the 11th District. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Any other adjourned motions? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Have a great day. Thank you.